I hope somebody can help me.
I might be like.
It's been following you since July, maybe something during the late. Like please down there please.
To the best of my ability star.
Okay. That should work.
Definitely. Your voice is a reason.
Copies of draft next June 18th meeting and then posted on the city website. Copies of community reports that also posted on the website. Communications, good communication is important because Margaret likes all to pay attention to it because it involves information that's relevant to change in the city speed line.
Oh yeah.
So do you want to start testing now or now? If I can develop some. Okay. So let's go right to the department reports and we begin with. All right.
Okay. We're pretty busy month. We have forty more calls for the month of June. Three of those were fired. Two of those fired or stove fires confined in stove with no extension. We had two vehicle accidents with injuries, one car murder accident, and vehicle accident without injuries. Fuel spill, one war crime, one illegal burn, and one standby. And then we had thirty false alarms. The total of forty one for the month. Here's date right now. We're at two thirty-five. Need someone to go off on trying to cut down a little bit so I think that happened when we worked the two on our page. I'll quit updating the vote. We got a rebuild next Tuesday. We'll go over everything with the rebuild with them. Make any estimate changes or rail-ons. We'll find out start date when we're going to have it. Still hope to have it in October, they said. Around October, so. Only way it looks right now is everything's online and everything's up the parrot track is going to happen, so. Find out more next Tuesday, so. All right, so we are.
What happened to the pedestrian accident? Anyone? Yeah, any information about this?
I'll be serious.
Okay.
I won't think it was.
Where was it?
I don't have, I don't have any information very exact. Whatever, I know it wasn't serious. Yeah, it wasn't serious.
Was the illegal burn cited?
What's that?
Were they ticketed?
No, they weren't ticketed. As a matter of fact, I think that's one just did on the street. Go over here. Yeah, well, no, I think it was. Open the fish. That was. Yes, no, it's very good. Yeah, it was. They weren't ticketed. I think we've done two so far this year. Neither one were ticketed. We don't really give out tickets. We try to educate first. If somebody gets a spot, then again, we contact each beginning. Go for the profit, but we always try to educate first when it comes to illegal burners. Especially so we would sense we've made it a lot easier now compared to the old way since we did the new law.
Yeah, right.
The new law, so we've actually made it easier. The more people have capabilities than they know they have on Florida where you used to be just. They'll go here and solve.
Any questions from the council? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mia, I see you there. There you are.
Hello. I'm here. I'm not much news to report because I've seen it. I've been staying pretty cool. And I've been checking in on a couple of them during this heat wave, so we're just continuing on with our regular schedule of Lynn still at the waterfront doing aerobics Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at ten AM. And then we have the chair yoga on via Zoom with Ed, which is still on Tuesday and Thursdays via Zoom. And what's the other one? Oh, and then it's regular yoga on Wednesday, and that's all on Zoom. All those links can be found on our City of Hudson website under our departments. And everyone else is just staying cool and healthy. No other updates, maybe until the fall. We may be bringing back Becky Sandler again for her famous everyday posture, which is great. But that's all we really have right now. Everyone's just laying low and staying cool and healthy as much as possible.
Thank you. Any questions from Catherine? Dominic.
Mia, who do I contact about doing senior programming at the workshops for seniors at your, at the senior center?
They can call us at five one eight eight two eight thirty-two hundred, and we're there, which is a second floor of the Army Building, nine to five, Monday through Friday as well.
And I can hold something right at the senior center for the seniors?
To hold something?
Host something for seniors at the senior center.
Yeah, if someone wants to hold something, they can call that number, and we can look at our schedule and see where the fit them in, and they can even come and take a look at our facility.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Rich, is the senior center or library someplace like a cooling center for people who might be too hot?
If they want to, I believe I heard you right. If they want to come and play games, or if they want to make a lunch, they can. We don't have a lunch program per se, but we do have a state recognized kitchen that they want to make their own lunch. But for most part, it's pretty quiet up there usually, but we do have a game room that's open. Usually never open that then nine to five. I believe I answered your question, right?
He's talking about that cooling room, you know, whether.
I'm sorry. I'm not hearing you.
About a cooling station for the seniors.
Oh, there's no cooling station, but it is cool there. We do have air conditioning available. So they can still come nine to five, Monday through Friday.
You have a question.
Well, I've been making use of it. I thank you very much for your kind and generous service. And it is cool up there, and even I'm in the middle of my third jigsaw puzzle up there.
You're welcome to come during our hours. Thank you.
No, yeah, I don't have a lot of friends up there.
Well. I'm sad. How much can we do for you?
I'm just laughing.
Or there. Is that it? Okay, let's. Okay, Margaret.
I do not have a report for you. I was really busy all June with the end of programming. Trying to get everybody ready for summer camp and anybody to set up and train, so I didn't have time to use your report. I thought about throwing something together last night and then dinged on just giving whatever, so. I can give you a report next week at the formal one if you'd like. I can also take some time now to just let you know where we're at, what we've been doing as well, so. Full disclosure, I will not be at the August meeting. I will be out of country at the Olympics. So I won't be there, but if you want one next week, I'd be more than happy to come in. But for now, the program ended. We ended with, I think it was somewhere over two hundred kids signed up for programming all across for kindergarten to teen programming. I want to give you the numbers of how many meals we serve at the program. Our programs were a success all the way through. We're really appreciative. Facilities that are doing so many programs with us for beautiful ragged. Bingle Smith being with us all the years. They just do an amazing job, not just teaching service skills, life skills. It was really great. They're going to be with us for summer camp. Summer camp, we ended up with over two hundred and twenty kids signed up. Some of them have slowly been dropping out, so more around the two hundred mark for kids that are actually signed up to come. We did have a little issue with bus in day one today, so that's part of my exhaustion right now. There's miscommunication around the bus company, and they forgot to assign drivers to our routes. So that was about an hour late, which I think caused us to be a little bit short on our count for kids today, and our parents can't wait an hour to get their shift in. We alternate plans, so I think our numbers will go up. We've had about a hundred and ten today out of the two hundred that we have signed up. We spent all last week training our staff. We had about twenty staff that are going to be full-time counselors and about some interns, CITs. That came and trained. We did camp-specific training. We did camper management and support. We did a financial literacy training for our staff. A lot of them are really young. This is their first jobs. They don't have bank accounts, so it's really good for them to learn all that. Everybody took a, some time to learn first aid CPR, and about a quarter of our staff got fully certified in it. Did a lost camper drill with the lifeguards. We've also been training all week. And really excited about how prepared all the staff are for the summer. Day one was good. There was good vibe. It was stressful from transportation, but it went really well. The counselors did really well. Staff did really well. Their first day of swimming lessons. Pull up for the camper lessons this time slot. We do have some openings for public, so I can share that with everybody if you want to get it out, get some more people there. It's a really great opportunity. And we're just ready for the next six weeks of fun and cats. Yeah.
Questions?
I'm down in Front Street all the time, and I saw the crowd down there this morning. But, you know, I've spoken to the kids. I could say this program is tremendously important. I can't imagine. I mean, Promenade Hill is great. The sprinkler is great, but I don't know what those kids would do without this program. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Harvard.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Am I loud enough?
Yes, yes.
As I'm following or reading us on the grant that School District has gotten with MAJ and CG for the five-year period for actual programming. Can you talk about how you see that intersecting with the youth department? Are you going to be partnering with them? But what is, because my understanding of some of what they're doing will be addressing actual programming particularly for special children with special needs and so forth. So have you been meeting with them? How do you see that going?
Oh, well, we were not a part of that grant, so we haven't been there at all as far as I know. But we're definitely looking to have a conversation with them and see what their plans are, because I think, as you know, being the children of special needs, that our program has been a primary focus for us as well. So hopefully, there's some chances to collaborate and, you know, get those kids being met together. But right now, there hasn't been any conversation. We're just going to have to talk to them and see what their plans are and how and if we could.
I don't know. Do you see, you know, I don't know how these students really know what the plans are, what the scope of that program is going to be. But do you see that program as potentially replacing some of your?
I don't think so, because there's always been a lot of other programs going on at the same time as what we offer at the youth center, and we still consistently have kids coming to us. A lot of other programs are like one or two days a week, or like for thirty to forty minutes after school, and then they'll come to us. So I think we're always kind of that staple of like that consistent. My child has a place to go every single day, not just Tuesday, Thursday, when it's science club, or, you know, Monday wants to be able to kite's nest, that kind of thing. So I think potentially like maybe a couple of kids finding something else to do, but I don't think in the larger picture, it's going to lower our numbers very much.
And is there, is there any? Is there any possibility in these conversations with that, with that group that you can get some funding for them if you're going to collaborate? That you can, because that, that program is Hudson City School District program, and I can almost, because you told us, close to forty percent of the kids getting services are not from City Hudson. And so is there some possibility that they could grab some funding to the youth department to cover the services that you are providing for special needs kids who are not from City Hudson?
I mean, I've always been saying, let's hope so, but I don't know what the, what they have, what kind of restrictions they have on money. It's definitely a conversation we'll have.
Okay, thank you.
I think the grant's already written for. It's hard to jump into it at the middle of the game. So I know they're going, I know their numbers were down at a point, so they're going to heavily recruit to get their numbers up, so. Do you think it'd be beneficial for you to put out a survey now to your existing saying, hey, do you plan on coming so you can kind of gauge your numbers? Because, you know, especially your, your younger numbers, because you know, you're renting a space, right? And if those numbers drop considerably, you know, that, that could be a savings for you if you can bring them back to the public.
Yeah, we will hopefully be starting our registration soon anyway, because if we don't start soon, we're never ready in time. So we'll start reaching out to families probably in just a couple of weeks with registration and engaging interests, so. Yeah.
Also, do you have bus aides on the bus?
On the morning, we have, we're supposed to have, so they didn't get picked up today. We're supposed to have some of our staff will ride the bus. They'll get on at stops. We have a couple getting on at front and Warren, and then another at Bliss, and they'll ride around with tips, and then we have a couple aides that ride in the evening as well.
Because that's part of your plan for the health department, right, to have bus aides on the bus?
Yeah, because we find that, you know, it's just helpful the bus driver needs to focus on driving. Our kids have had a long, crazy day, and they need some support sometimes, and having our staff on there to know our kids and know how to ask help of them and then know which stop they actually get off on and who's supposed to meet on is super helpful and helps the bus driver be able to be there.
Now, do you have a list on who gets signed, who gets off, who's out the wall, and things like that?
Yep, yep. When everybody registers, you register and you say, here is my child's pickup spot. Here's my child's drop-off point. We make sure that those are validated. They have to list every single person who's allowed to come pick up their child so we can get their ID. And then if they're allowed to walk, they say they can walk. If they're allowed to walk, only with a family member, they put that in, so. And then everybody's got their own end of date to meet where all of that is documented.
When's swimming lesson starting?
Starts today.
Asserted, ask the enrollment and swimming lessons.
Like I said, for camp, it's really good for the public. It's a little less. So I'm trying to really, this is the first session. It's two weeks. There's two more, two-week sessions, and I'm really hoping we can fill those out.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Rich, do you still attend the host?
Yes.
With the city, I'm, it was so different also for do they participate in?
Not as regularly, but they do come every now and then.
And given the grant that I've been discussing, it seems like it would be imperative for them to be part of it.
Yeah. So I'll talk to the people at Promise, run that, so I'll pitch them an email, see if they can make sure to invite them.
Rich, predict the, right, the city, is it, however limited is the city of Hudson residents?
For swim lessons? Swim lessons, they're which program?
The open summer camp.
The summer camp is open to the whole county. Anybody who wants to come, there's just out-of-city fees. So it's free to anyone who's a resident of the city. Fifty dollars for students who are at the Hudson City School District, and then a hundred dollars for outside of the district.
Okay, any questions to Catherine? Well, we have. Thank you. Any questions? We have one online. Go ahead. Go, go ahead. I've got thirty-eight percent. What is it? This is a busy, busy community call. I'm going to hear you. Can you speak or can't hear you? I'm doing something. Is the best comment you have older? Is it wrong with your device? Right.
You can also send me an email though if you can't get your phone to work.
My phone's what? Brian, you still here? You still there? He left. Oh, yeah.
I'm here, I'm here.
I'm just checking if you can speak, that's all.
Yeah, we can, I can hear you. Bill is unmuted, but I'm not sure why we can't hear him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so is Chief.
Well, everyone. Hope everyone had a good course. So body worn camera reports, nothing to report that indicates any further training for that. Number of youth support incidents for June was zero. Number of arrests were twenty-two for thirty-eight whole charges. Number of emotionally disturbed person called was twelve, and number of called involving drug overdose or suspected overdose was zero. I will bring up a grand marcency that we had. Thank you, Lloyd, for laying that up last month. It was pretty interesting. It was a firearm. Someone's personal firearm was stolen when they were out. The detectives conducted investigation, and we recovered that, that gun. So that was a successful investigation. I think it was important to share. Person did have a pistol permit, and then just things happened, right? But we did successfully retrieve that. I know you mentioned a pedestrian accident, but we had no pedestrian accidents reported to us last month. So either it wasn't reported that way, or because it was no injuries, it was not reported that way, so just so you know. And then one other thing, I was going to draft a resolution for next week's formal meeting, not about the toe. This is something different. For the toe stuff, I know there was some confusion. I forwarded information to Crystal to not, or Crystal, who was working on something to codify what we had spoke about last meeting. What I was going to draft a resolution on was asking the council to recognize Tuesday, August sixth, twenty-twenty-four, a national night out here in the city of Hudson. We started our first, I guess, attempt at national night out last year in October with the Harvest Festival that was sponsored by Sparkle Hudson and Operation Unite. This is a national campaign for law enforcement agencies and communities to increase police and community engagement, promote federal relationships, and foster, you know, a safer and happier community. So we have a plan. I have a plan with a bunch of different community organizations. The Department's going to be a part of that. Sparkle Hudson, Operation Unite, Rashad to Bingle Smith. It's too many to mention here, but we're all going to come together and try to bring something great to the table and have it the waterfront.
Do you want to run a declaration?
Right, just declare it.
Do you want to do a resolution?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, okay.
Is that a Saturday? It's a Saturday?
It's a Tuesday, so it's held on the first Tuesday in August. Last year when we did it, we did it later in the fall just because of timelines, and then we wanted to make sure we did it on the actual national night. It's a Tuesday in August, bring some water, some games, giveaways, backpacks, back-to-school things for the kids and the community. We're done. Right now, the time is up in the air, but it'll be later in the evening, so it's not as hot. I'm thinking four to eight around that time.
And I'm hoping Riggs is going to be there, right?
Yes, he can be there.
All right. Questions from the guys? Bill, you still have your hand up? I don't hear you.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm on my phone now. Hey, Chief Franklin, I'd like to get your take on something related to the Police Commissioner, specifically. First of all, is the Police Commissioner here now? Do you know?
He's not.
Okay.
I want to. I want to see.
I want to go over something that your predecessor, Chief Moore, said that the last meeting he attended. And he was basically summing up, you know, how he felt about his tenure there. But he also, he ended with, with a few concerns of his, and one of them was about the role of the Police Commissioner. And if I could, uh, just, I'd like to quote from the um meeting minutes of a year ago, as a matter of fact. Um, if I could, and get your take on it and see what's been done about it, if anything. The police chief said that the council should consider refiguring the department, the police department's command structure at present. At present, the code empowers the police commissioner to serve as the head of the department. That's code nineteen-two. Then Ed said that code nineteen-nineteen defines the commissioner as having supervis- supervisual and control of the department. And that code nineteen dash sixteen makes it the duty of the chief of police to simply oversee the bookkeeping of the department. He said this bifurcated uh command structure serves to confuse our officers. He then said that uh Commissioner Bauer puts in fifteen to twenty hours a week plus weekends and was unpaid. Ed suggested that the commissioner's duties be narrowed to be the final arbiter in disciplinary actions. He then went on to say, this way our citizens will have input regarding officer conduct, the biggest issue in the forefront today. Leave the administration of the job to a paid police professional. Now, are you, Chief Franklin, are you aware of this, of what Ed said? Did he talk to you about this? And, and do you agree with what he said about the command structure i- in relation to the police commissioner?
I don't wanna give my opinion on that. However, the uh, the former police chief did speak to me about that. I can't speak for his feelings on the matter.
No, I know, but do you, are, are, are you at all on board with what he said, or do you, do you agree with it or not?
I don't think it's necessary at this meeting.
You don't wanna say anything, in other words. You don't have any, you don't have anything to say about what your predecessor said was a concern of his at the department, a structural concern at the Hu- Hudson Police Department that you have no concern about.
I heard about it. Go ahead, move, next, next question.
So we should drop, so this issue should be dropped? It shouldn't, shouldn't be uh taken up by the council because Ed said that the council should consider refiguring the police department's command structure. Do you, do you agree with that, what, what Ed said? Chief Franklin? Apparently you don't. Thank you.
Good night, there'll be a charter. Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Rob, are you there? Everybody there for the call?
I'm ready. Hey, uh, thanks, thanks, Chief, for taking care of that housekeeping matter for me. So we have, Sharon.
Thank you.
Imagine.
Window. Okay. Um, got the sewer department's septic for May was sixty thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, if that's not our highest month to date, it's certainly in, in the top three. Uh, we have issued the notice to proceed and notice award for the Union Street uh sewer project. So that is expected to commence uh probably in the next couple of weeks and should go on until the fall. It's basically six hundred linear feet of, I think it's relatively small to ten inch sewer main going down the south side with uh connections to houses below the four forty-four-ish uh area. And uh, some new connections will go to the alley and some will come to the new sewer main in the front. So uh, like I said, that begins uh, you know, within the next couple of weeks. We also have uh, we formulate our formal response to the uh order and consent with DEC. And most of it has to do with procedural things uh establishing the sewer uh extension permit process because that currently doesn't exist in either uh our long-term control plan or our speedies permit. Uh, so this is the mechanism in order to develop that program. And then we can start uh administering the program, once it's approved by DEC, administer the pro- program uh to clear the backlog of uh planning board projects waiting for sewer extensions. Uh, at the water department, this is just out in the reservoir. Um, this is our little makeshift, I don't know what to call it, but anyway, it's got a sickle bar in the front and motor in the back. And it uh cuts the water chestnuts. We grab them before they turn to sea. So that way the uh, they don't have a chance to propagate. And, you know, hopefully after a number of years, we'll beat it back enough where it'll just be a nuisance issue and not really a, you know, a concern. Uh, this is the actuator, you know, the push button down at the uh Promenade Hill and the splash pad was out of service a little bit last month. You know, I mean, so somebody took a rock to this. I mean, this is hard grade steel. And uh, so to sit there and, and chip it away at it, it's, it really beat on it. Um, and it was, it did break the seal, so we had to repair it. Uh, we were able to do it. It does have a little bit of diminished capacity, you know, nothing too significant at this point. But, I mean, if, you know, everything's mechanical and if things get broken, you know, eventually they just stop working all together. We have uh, another concern is the, the tank is down about four hundred thousand gallons. And, you know, it's about fifteen percent. We typically, you know, during the, a heat wave or something like that, hot weather, would, would see something around a hundred thousand dollar, a hundred thousand gallon drop, which we could, you know, maintain and, and build overnight. Um, the breakdown, we, you know, we're not at capacity. Uh, is it a concern? I'm talking about it, so it's, it's clearly uh somewhat of a concern. You know, the issue is that although the, the plant is currently running at about one point four million gallons a day, we um, the, its design capacity is two point five million, but we run off of uh gravity flow from the reservoir. There's diff, the, the reservoir is a hundred feet higher than the plant. Uh, there's a, there's a, uh, there's a point where we no longer able to match flows. And, you know, we're kind of at that using gravity. So uh, if we, if this becomes prolonged or we see levels dropping more significantly, you know, we have to consider using the pumps at the Claver Pump Station to physically push more water here, which creates its own set of issues. One, there are two hundred horsepower pumps. It's gonna cost uh tens of thousands of dollars to turn them on. And once they're on, they go on full, which means they're gonna push everything that they can, three million gallons, up to the plant. And then the plant's gonna have a valve that's gonna try and hold it back. And now you've got a hundred and forty-year-old water main with a pump pushing one way and a valve holding it back. And so there's concerns about that. So, you know, we, obviously, you know, we understand that people are, you know, doing stuff in the hot weather. But, I mean, there's a couple of reasons we found. Uh, it's hard to see on this image, but this is out in the boulevards and this is someone with just an open faucet, uh hose bib, just running down on the ground, out into the street. So, you know, there, that, there's a couple, there's a lot of reasons for, you know, the tank dropping stupidity is, or carelessness is certainly one of them. That's an example. Um, you know, another is, you know, we used to grab leaf bags probably for a couple of weeks in March or April, and that was the end of it. And we're still sending uh dump truck around regularly to grab these leaf bags. So uh, it just looks like there's a, there's a lot of gardening and a lot of uh growth going on and, and that's, you know, that's consuming water as well. So uh, just, you know, just kind of giving you a, a heads up. Like I said, it's not, it's not a critical concern right now, but, you know, it's, it certainly is notable. Uh, the lead service project is progressing. We're probably about half of the way through the properties in the city. Uh, we do have an October sixteenth deadline to get it to the EPA. And, you know, we're comfortable that we're gonna uh satisfy that, uh, that deadline. The um, you know, just like some of the classic summer DPW stuff, this was a short street that was, you know, overgrown onto the city street. And so, you know, we cleared it away from the street. Um, we did do, uh, this was a, uh, there was a request for the speed zone, the mobile one. So we put it here, but I guess it's gotta go lower. So I, I think they've moved it down by Oakdale already. We just have to recharge the batteries. I don't believe this one has a, a solar, so it has to be recharged. Uh, the striping contractor for the county did come through uh last month, so this was one of the new areas that were striped. We also um completed the reach-through for, or pass-through, whatever they call it, at the code enforcement. This is at the fire station where the new code enforcement office is. Uh, they still have to do some painting or whatever, but basically, uh, we're almost done with that. You know, they're just regular, can, uh, always working on vehicles. So this is a new hydraulic uh um, fluid tank. And, you know, this is just, there's a lot involved with, you know, these are the valves that go on. Each one of them is bringing fluid to either a plow or the PTO or to um any number of the dump, you know, any number of the operations of the truck. So uh, it, it is, you know, it is a, a rather complex process. So uh, the Harry Howard trees, so they were installed last week. After the fact, I guess it was determined that gator bags should be employed. I'm not sure why that wasn't determined before, but, you know, it is what it is. So they were put in, uh, DPW installed them. We filled them with a tank initially, but uh, the easier way is because we have the hydrants is we just put a hose bib on one of the hydrants and we've got a hose that goes along and fills them up. It's a little easier that way. Uh, another parks-related discussion, and this is Seventh Street Park, the test pits. You know, when anybody needs something done, they always call the DPW and we're happy to uh, to assist. So uh, in this instance, they wanted to go down six feet in a couple of different locations to determine what the underlying soil was. And, you know, as expected, it was mostly, mostly clay. A couple of holes there. There was something we seen mixed into it. Uh, as part of the ongoing discussion with the Department of Justice, which I'm not directly involved with, there was a list of ramps, so I figure I provided it to uh the Justice Department and uh management, so I might as well share it with you guys. These are, you know, the, as part of like our CHIPS-related projects, you know, these are a, a number of ADA lamps. So, you know, in the last six years or so, there's about ninety new ramps uh citywide. We are also uh progressing with the, oh, we do have a contractor. Uh, last month, there was a resolution to fund for some sidewalk uh repairs to conform with the DOJ consent decree deadline. So we are meeting with the sidewalk contractor, and it's, this is basically a contractor we used before to eliminate any trip hazards. Uh, they have a horizontal saw and, and they have some epoxy products that, you know, make them compliant without, you know, need to replace the entire sidewalk uh panel and/or a whole section. Um, you know, sometimes that's unavoidable, but a lot of times it's not. Uh, we also have a striping contractor coming in to do the new handicap spaces in the municipal parking lots as well as uh create the handicap lanes uh to show individuals where what's the most uh expedient way to get to their destination. So that will probably start in um mid to late August or September. The deadline, I believe, was the end of October, so we should base on the work that, scope that I'm talking about, we should complete, we should uh meet that deadline. Uh, the NIPA streetlight project. So this is just kind of showing us a new LED one over here, and this is an old high-pressure sodium over there. So it just kind of gives you, you know, differences between the lights. Uh, the pattern on the ground is, is very similar. The um, one of the issues that was, you know, didn't come with necessarily all the things that we needed to know. Uh, apparently is, you know, we took ownership of the streetlights in May twentieth and uh, so that's great, but to national grid, that's a hard date. So what has happened is, I mean, uh, when they set a new pole, which this thirty-nine one is a brand-new pole, they're taking the, the streetlight off of the old pole and setting it on the ground because they don't move private property, which is, so we've owned it for all of four weeks and now it's private property. Um, the, I won't say it's good news, but, I mean, at least we do have allowances in the NIPA conversion project uh because apparently this is something that happens uh consistently. And so there are line items to have the NIPA contractor install the, the new head on the new pole, the, the existing head on the new pole. We did ask them that they just call us if they're gonna take it down and not move it, so that way we can store it in the garage and not just leave it on the sidewalk like that. Um, but other than that, you know, it's like it says, one of those little small print things. One, and the other thing that we found out about is, uh, now that we own the electrical infrastructure, Premier, who locates underground electric and gas for National Grid, will no longer locate the light, the power for the streetlights. Uh, w- we were told that we could purchase a map of all that for a thousand dollars, which we agreed to. And then we're told that that was not included in the closing. It was a separate invoice, so we did pay that invoice last month. And uh, so we're in a bit of a quagmire because the traditional located underground electric for the streetlights won't do it, and we don't have the maps to determine where it is. So we're trying to uh do our best to uh use the equipment that we have to find these, this infrastructure. Uh, moving on to the Ferris, oh, uh, and you do have a resolution that's on a docket already. That's the, in the end of April, DOT sends us the new CHIPS balances with the rollovers and the new appropriations. So all it is, a budget amendment increases the revenue by the exact same amount that it increases the expense. So there's a zero impact uh to the taxpayer. It's just uh aligning our budget to match what DOT has uh, has appropriated to us. Uh, moving to the Ferry Street Bridge. So, you know, a lot of, there was a bunch of utility conflicts and, and steps that were involved. And this one, Mid Hudson Cable had actually a, a fiber optic that was, this is an old uh abandoned gas main from back when the gasification plant was down where the current Dunn warehouses. To those who don't realize what that is, it's uh, I guess, raw material like coal or whatever was somehow heated to a degree so that it created natural gas or something there similar. And away it went into a pump system through these pipes. Anyway, it was abandoned, so it was cut out of the way to where they could relieve uh and move their, their conduit out of the way. Um, as demolition started, all the decking was removed. Sessler, who was the subcontractor, came in at nighttime, so uh, that's because there were fewer trains at night. And when they're working over the, over the superstructure, when a train comes through, they have to stop work, so that's why they did it at night. Um, this is the daytime picture of the, all the decking removed. And this is with everything removed, so if you look closely, you'll see um, the new bridge will start way over here, uh, this far abutment. Uh, it will stop, here is the abandoned water main. There'll be a new water main on the south side. And this was the steps for the old pedestrian bridge. That's been removed as well. Obviously, there'll be new pedestrian walkways uh incorporated into the new bridge. And this is the fiber duct that is owned by Mid Hudson Cable, and that stays where it is. Um, so as the decking, everything removed, then Colorado begins their work, taking down the top rows of the concrete from the old abutment, because they have to build new ones. And you can see, this is after they pour the base, the footing base for the new abutment. And here they're uh forming, this is co- uh plywood is for the form for the new um uh, for the new base and piles that'll hold the actual superstructure of the new bridge. Uh, moving on to Louiezy, which is the DRI project. Uh, it's, this is, I, I really uh, you know, removed a lot of the detail, just so that you, you know, get overwhelmed. But you can basically see work is starting uh next, this week, mobilization and some work. And then uh, you know, more work starting next week. And, you know, this is on first warrant on the end of the month, and then also second warrant. Uh, the important thing for us, based on where we are with the, the DRI and with justice, is that we look like everything should be done, you know, maybe October-ish, uh, which is fine, because our Department of Justice uh consent or extension is in late October, and this work is incorporated as part of that consent order. Um, so we also have the cemetery. This is just a, a power broom that we purchased uh to really to do the ramps and stuff around Promenade Hill with the new ramps, but obviously can be used for snow as well as uh for grass removals. So we use it, we can't bring the sweeper in parts of the old cemetery, because the brushes are too low to the ground. Uh, and if you noticed up at Paul Ave, there was a car accident about a month ago where two cars had an issue and one smacked into the fence. So we're putting it up and stabilizing it right now, and what'll have to happen is we'll file them. Uh, get a contractor to come and replace these two sections and charge it against the insurance. And uh, that is all I have.
Questions from the council? Rich, oh, uh, hey, Rob, um, first of all, thank you very much for all your help with the uh street tree planting. I'm Harry Howard, and I thank you to DPW, um, especially also with the cemetery entrance. Uh, thanks for all of that, all that work. Um, so the uh, there's the two fountains, which someone asked me about, um, the Charmin Park, which is right across from. the, there's the two fountains which someone asked me about on the Charlemagne Park, which is right across from the Opera House that's involved. And then the other fountain, which is, if you keep going towards State Street and that little park area. She's been third floor. But those two palmin's aren't working anymore. Is that it?
Correct. The, so the one closer to the Opera House. That one, it's, I don't know if it's just saying some kind of animal damage or whatever, but the all the internal workings are no longer operable. So it has to be, a whole new pump system has to be purchased to replace that. And I'm not sure about the one over on State Street. That one, I'm not aware of any issues with that. So I'll just have to reach out tomorrow and find out what's going on.
Up there on State Street with those like stone, the little cobblestone thing for the
Yeah, like the wafers, yeah, something like that.
I think that's like ADA nightmare there. Like, I don't know how, what is supposed, what is supposed to happen there? Like, is this a, like a C X D tape on that primary to fix that?
No, actually, that was all donated. That was done by the Park Foundation. And they designed all of it. So it went from all the way from the Opera House. It was a nonprofit organization that not did all the design work. They had an agreement with the city. And they hired and paid for all the consultants and the design and they paid for the construction and all the site work. So it was, this is their vision.
But those stones, like, how would you send them from a walker, a wheelchair and pay that?
I'm sorry, are they what?
You know those game stones I'm talking about that, that still work? With that fountain is that little park on Street map third floor? It's like, it looks more like a waffle.
Yeah, yeah, the waffle stuff, yeah. Yeah, it's a, it's a bit of a pain to maintain. I don't, you're, you're breaking up on me.
Is it supposed to be like that?
Yeah.
I guess the question, is it ADA compliant?
Oh, is that, that I don't know.
If it is, it has to be part of the program. Oh.
Yeah, I could tell you, it's not in the, I don't think it's in the consent decree. So at least you don't have to make that decision before October. But I don't know. I mean, that's a good question for you know, I don't, I don't know if we have requirements in and out.
I just wanted to ask about the tree planting. I love the trees that are on Harry Howard Avenue. I just got a quick question. Are you guys going to be planting any more trees? I noticed that the Charles Williams Park can eat some. I was down there last weekend with my granddaughter. It's like
Well, it's first is important to clarify that the DPW did not plant the trees on Harry Howard. That was a grant from DEC that the Conservation Advisory Council did. All we do is we provide logistical support, you know, technical and then some follow up work. So we weren't, you know, we were involved with the project, but we, that's a, that's a rich bowl of thing. And so the reason I say that is because when it comes to Charles Williams Park, the same thing is going to happen as far as that redevelopment plan. There'll be all new landscaping and trees that will be incorporated into that.
You're working on it.
I need you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have Rob, thank you so much for doing, moving the speed radar. And also for the lines and paddock. They came out beautiful. I was wondering about the crosswalk. There is a stop line currently on paddock. Are you, I assume people are local views of the stop line. It's going to be removed, right? When you put the cross.
We're just gonna, we're just gonna put the crosswalk over top of it. So you, you won't notice it. It'll, it'll blend in. A crosswalk with no stop sign? You don't need a crosswalk with a stop sign. Add a new section?
Okay, Ron, I'll pass it on to the seniors.
I just got one question.
Ron, first.
Rob, I just got a curious question about the steel. What happens with the steel and everything from the periphery bridge? Does that get recycled or what, what happens to the steel, you know, all the old steel?
Contractor takes it.
They take it?
The contractor is part of their contract because they're required to remove it. So
Right.
We don't, we don't want a big pile. If you want a pile of steel, I got a pile of trolley tracks from the early eighteen hundreds down behind the DPW garage. And I got a pile of box rail of galvanized steel that the DOT gave to us back in the nineteen seventies. So if you're looking for steel.
Yeah, okay. I was just making sure they, they, they're responsible for taking it out and doing whatever they do.
Oh, yeah. It's all inclusive. Just like going to a sandals resort.
There you have the question from the online, ron@dicky.
Hello, I'd like to ask Mr. Perry or anyone else who might have any information on this in connection with issues of the DRI and ADA projects. What is the current timetable for working on the Second Street Stairs at Second Street and Allen?
It starts in two weeks.
So that will be starting in two weeks. And this is a general question, not necessarily just for Mr. Perry. Will we, I understand that there is no longer a DRI committee, but DRI issues are being handled from within the mayor's office. Will we, the public and the council be getting regular updates on the progress of the DRI projects?
I don't speak for the mayor and I don't
No, I understand that. I wasn't asking, I said, I wasn't asking you in particular, but anyone. I believe at, at some point in the past at the council meeting, it was promised that there would be ongoing updates, not your, it's not your responsibility.
Right. Just to, just to kind of put it in some kind of perspective. Early on, there were regular meetings like every other week into a month because so much of this stuff was in its infancy and there was a lot of the public input that was required as part of the project. But you know, more or less the last year has just been the execution on the contracts that have already gone through all that the public processes is just the implementation. So there really hasn't, I don't, I'm not going to oversimplify, but there really hasn't been a whole lot to talk about. I think the only thing that's, that's really outstanding that hasn't been shared publicly is, you know, what the next steps are with the Figari. And I believe you guys are putting together a resolution to hire a consultant for that, right?
Thanks, because I was going to add.
I don't know, maybe you already have money.
I was going to mention the, the fishing village as something that could be updated. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Yeah, this is a comment, Rob, I think in, in your presentation where you had the table, the table, timetable with the various pieces of the project, that was the DRI time, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. So is that online?
No, it's online.
Oh, wait, is it? Oh, yeah.
Did you, did you pull it to the document, sir? So, Ron, in, in what, what Rob was presenting, one of the things he presented was like a work with dates and timelines of begin and end dates for the DRI project. So I can get a copy of that and make sure that you can see that.
Thank you. This is, this is on the DRI page on the city website.
No, it's someone of mine. It's my report. If you go to the committee reports for, what is this, July eighth, right? Oh, it's on there. Yeah, DPW Superintendent's Report.
Okay.
Just go to the documents for this meeting and you'll see my report.
Thanks for, I, I just want to suggest since there is a DRI page on the city website, you have to kind of drill down a couple of levels to get to it. I think that that document and other documents relating to the DRI should also be posted there. But thanks again.
Sure.
Yeah, this, I, I think we're going to need to have a place for, you know, as much that we can publish regarding construction around this as possible. So, yeah.
Yeah, any revised plans, like drawings?
There's no more drawing. That's what the document wrote. For that, it was slightly condensed in version. That's it. That's what they're doing.
But there's no visual plan. He's got a bad vision. Rob, do you have a visual plan?
You want the design plans?
Yeah.
Great. If you guys can read them, we have at it. It's good bedtime reading. I'll tell you that. But yeah, we can send those over.
That would be great. If you could put on the in your report or add them into your
I'll send them over to Justin and he can load them up on the, the DRI webpage or Tracy.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
But this, um Ron, are you done? Is that all you have? Hand swap.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Is it just me?
Have you daytime? Um, resolutions?
Okay. Joe.
First resolution. When the commissioner reads, can I have the introduction of second? Margaret? Second resolution. If the resolution authorizing a budget amendment for planning board stuff, right? Can I have? Okay, introduction of second. Margaret? Second. Oh. The third resolution authorizing a budget amendment to consolidate hybrid including from the chip program Rob referred to earlier. Can I have an introduction then? Margaret? Second. One. A local person was inspired by seeing the trees to donate to the C A P. Can I have the introduction of second? Rich and Jennifer, including before an attention. Thank you. The next resolution. Ask you, that's the nature of sand and absolving them away when they owe the city in back wrench. Introduction of second, Margaret and Jennifer. And lastly, a resolution authorizing budget amendment for the Hudson Youth Department Leadership Program. And respectful and then okay, now, we have, we still have some laws. I'm wondering if anybody did any of the research that we talked about for the restraint of animals law?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. And what did you discover?
Well, there's, it, first off, the Humane Society does not have one state. Seems like they're very sensitive to the region that you're speaking. I'd like to hold off and if possible, provide a final report next week. Because I want to pull it together in a normal fashion. In one of the issues that I found that, and I also want to speak to the chief about it to see about how to be enforced this is many of them have, it's a, it's a two hour period within twenty four hour period. And so, you know, there's a context there as well.
So actually, allow me to turn it on.
Yes.
That's on my agenda, the legal committee this weekend. So I, there are numbers that I had wanted to go through with the legal committee to discuss the principle. So the restraint of all those things, I had all of the things you were suggesting.
Well, Chris, I wouldn't volunteer, but I'm inclined with that.
We have the legal on Thursday, so if you could provide the government's issue, we can help you with that.
Okay.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be great.
And then we can bring us
Yeah.
I think it was very
Any, oh, we're in business. Oh, Margaret, you want to discuss?
Yeah, I just wanted to give everybody a heads up. Back in the spring. As you know, we are trying to reduce the speed limit citywide to twenty five miles per hour. And first of all, this is something that I will be reaching out to discuss with you when you renew your deal. On a day on Thursday. We contracted with, the process is that you have to have a review and recommendation from a job engineer. We contacted with great management in the spring. They did the study of speeds throughout the city. And came back with, they had their preliminary report back a few weeks ago and they came back last week with their final draft report. I'd like you to read this again. Even will be looking at this on Thursday. We hopefully will bring it to the full council on next week. My understanding of the steps of turning toward new principle are that now that we have this recommendation, since we teratively have no state rights within the city of Hudson, all of our streets are city streets. The D W A needs an operation on all of our streets. We try to carry it as a charitable institution. We are now positioned to reduce the speed limit. The recommendation from great management basically is to reduce the limit citywide, which is, that's ideal because then you don't have to put signs up all over forever. Just go to city speed limit and reduce it to twenty five. With the exception of the entrance into Hudson on nine G coming in. Because you're coming from a fifty five mile an hour, currently it drops to thirty. They're recommending that you drop to thirty five and then further down, we're looking at our avenue. Putting a sign up there that was being, because then you're being into more residential. And then you have a sign up there that says city speed twenty five. The other recommendation that they have, so you know, I just sent it out this afternoon. I don't expect anybody to have time to read it. The other recommendation that they have was that the currently this school zone is actually very large and it doesn't have clear sign of the beginning of the end. I believe the reason that it's much larger than what is the stage recommendation on, I mean, in length of the school, of the school zone is because of the time that it was put in place, John Edwards was school. So it encompasses a much wider area than the issue. So one recommendation is to type that up, have a clear begin school zone, end school zone. And that area. So take, take some time, take a look about. Even will be looking at it on Thursday and then we can discuss it on next week. Do you have any questions? Just email.
Other than before we adjourn, I'd like to take a moment of silence in honor of the rich Harry Howard. It was a really fantastic member of this, obviously, group of councilmen. Thank you all. Anything else to follow me there? Margaret?
Can you have him make a motion to adjourn?
If he may. And the one, if you're in there, yes, please, I was prepared to sing about that. What a wonderful And the one, if you're ready, yes, please, always better, you stick your right hand on it, and what I want.